It's six o'clock. At this time, I will call the Perry City Council Meeting for Tuesday, March 29, 2016 to order please. We have a court. Item three is invocation and the pledge of allegiance to the flag. If you would please rise. I'd like to call on Reverend Willie King, Senior Pastor for Faith Bible Fellowship, for our invocation.
Let's bow our heads, please. Father God, we thank you so much for the opportunity that we're here to serve the city. I pray, Lord, that you give us wisdom, and we want to move the city forward. We want to thank you and praise you for each administration, Lord, and bless us now, and we take care of business. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I'd like to call Mayor Pro Temporal Randall Walker for the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen.
You're welcome.
Item four, recognitions and presentations. For A is the introduction of some new police officers. Chief Lynn?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, council.
You got some forward, guys.
So, it's a pleasure of introducing you to our two newest recruits. They're both going to be attending the academy because they're not certified. They don't come to us from that background. We've got Edrika Gary, who was a Houston County high school graduate, a track star for them when she graduated in 2011. She's been working for Warner's Police Department as a book and transport officer, and we're looking forward to getting her through the academy, getting her on the road. And then we've got Christopher. So, he's got a longer bio. I got to cheat a little bit on that, but Christopher Davis, he's from Macon, where he was born. He's been working up in Atlanta. He went to work for Bell South right out of high school, worked for them through transitions to AT&amp;T, retired with an early retirement last year. Came and applied, said he'd always wanted to be a police officer. He's taken that early retirement with AT&amp;T. He's married to his high school sweetheart, and they've got two daughters and a son. The oldest daughter just got accepted to Georgia Southwestern State University, and so Chris starts the academy on Monday as well, and he's already been out. He's been here a week longer than Edrika. She's only been here starting today. And so he's already been on the range doing some practicing, and they've been studying policy and all the things we need to get them ready, and we'll get them through the academy, then we'll get them in the field training program and teach them how to be peri-police officers. And so these are our new folks.
Officer Gary, Officer Davis, welcome to the City of Perry. You will enjoy. I sincerely hope you will enjoy working for the best city anywhere, anytime. We feel like we have the best police department. No slight against the Houston County, the other two cities, but we are still prejudiced here, and we're going to bore that on every time we get the chance. If you need anything from us, go see the chief. He will take care of you, but you're joining a very well-respected family, and we're looking forward to great things out of you. I just got one bit of advice: don't let her outrun you. Because you're going to hear about it. And I want to know who wins, because that's going to happen at some point.
Well, she's the region champion for the 4x100 relay, so I don't know about that.
You better. Don't run with her. That's what I said.
Don't run with her.
Don't run with her.
Welcome to both of you. We're very excited to have you join our ranks, and we're looking forward to having great things come from y'all. Thank you very much. And we have another presentation to Mayor and Council from Ms. McFlinden from the Perry Chamber of Commerce.
Mayor and council, I'd also like to have David Campbell join me. He is our board chair this year, and as you know, we have a little event coming up in less than two weeks, the Dogwood Festival, and the chamber wants to present the city council a framed copy of our print. It was done by a peri artist, Susan Baraki, this year, and we would most welcome seeing it hung in City Hall if y'all would join us in celebrating the upcoming festival. And then if you're able, we will present it to you and get a photo.
Sure.
Should we get in the bin? Please. Can you tilt this so the glare comes up there?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We will hang it at City Hall.
It's partnership. Very exciting.
Absolutely. And we're looking forward to it. You've got the dog dogs coming back, right?
Ultimate air dogs.
Oh, okay.
Ultimate air dogs, yes.
They still jump, right?
They do. And the balloons are coming, so.
That's good, too.
Yes, everything is on task, so.
That is fantastic. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, sir.
Looking forward to it. Thank you. Item five, appointments to boards, commissions, and authorities. We have one nomination. This is from the Main Street Coordinator, Ms. Catherine Edgman. Perry's Main Street's nominating committee is recommending that Mr. Kelly Hillis be appointed to the new Perry Main Street Advisory Board to serve the unexpired term formally held by Ms. Susan Sprague. The term ends December 31, 2016. He was nominated by and serves on the Perry Downtown Development Authority Board. Council, at this time, I will entertain a motion that we accept the recommendation from Mr. Kelly Hillis.
Salute.
Second. The motion is second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item six, our community partners update. We have at least one. We have a representative of Georgia Power here to discuss the LED light change-out program. We have Mr. Jody Blasche. Is that close enough?
That's right.
With Georgia Power. Welcome.
Thanks, sir. My name's Jody Blasche, and I am a distribution operator in Macon for Georgia Power Company. Basically, what I do there is monitor the distribution system from the substation all the way to the customer community. For the last two months, I've been working with Joe down here in Perry, Hawkinsville, Cawthorn, in customer service. So basically, I'm here to talk about the LED conversion that Georgia Power is doing into Perry. Lee Wilmer approached us about changing these lights out when he found out that it was available to the city, so we're happy to do that, Lee. Basically, we're going to change out 1,062 lights in the city of Perry. These will be streetlights, streetlights only. We call them Cobra Heads because of the way they kind of hang out over the street with the head of the light looks. Currently, they're high-pressure sodium lights, which gives off that kind of oranges tint. The new LED lights will be more clear, light-like, get kind of more uniform look on the street. It's really going to light up your streets and sidewalks. It's going to look a lot nicer. It's going to be a lot safer. The lights are virtually maintenance-free. The bulbs last a lot longer. Any accosts are absorbed. You know, we'll make up all the maintenance and efficiency of the lights. There's no additional cost to the city of Perry.
Is the quality of the light going to be equal to or greater than what we currently have with the sodium lights?
They will be better. It'll be a better light. It's a better light. So, it's like I said, it's a clear, bright, kind of a light lighting. You won't get the orange tint. It'd be a better lit surface.
How long will it take?
It's going to take the crews. We're going to hire contractors to do the work. It's going to take them about two months. They're going to actually start next week, Monday, hanging these lights. They're going to average about 25 a day, weather permitting. You probably won't see them hanging very many in the rain. So about two months worth of work, 25 a day, so you may see contractors change out the lights. Shouldn't see any eruption to anybody's service.
Very good.
So, thank you for reaching out for us. I know y'all will be pleased with it.
We're looking forward to it. Council, do you have any questions for Mr. Blasche?
I have one. I have one of your lights in my yard. Will it, can I get it changed out to the LED?
You can. We do. Now, I'm not educated on all the lighting, but we do have commercial and residential lighting programs. Do you pay for the light now?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, you can get an LED light put in your yard. Sure can. Go see one of the girls in the office there, Amanda or Betty, and give them a call. You know, we can change the lights out.
Thank you.
Sure can.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you for having me.
We're looking forward to it. Absolutely. Any other community partners wish to give us an update at this time? You already have. Would you like to just say one more time, "Welcome to the Dogwood Festival"?
Absolutely. Always Perry proud. We do kick off, we move in on Friday, the 8th, and the pilot's party, we're hosting that at the Art Center this year, and thank y'all for that partnership as well. I think it's going to make that event a smoother event for them. The dogs will move in on Friday, the 8th, and then we kick it off bright and early Saturday morning, and the festival is from 10 to 6 on Saturday downtown, noon to 5 on Sunday, and then out at the Ag Center. The balloon event will be from 5:00 PM until 9:00 PM with the balloons glowing at dusk. So please make plans to join us, and thank y'all for the partnership.
Is it Saturday night event? Is that the one at Bag Center, or is it Sunday night?
That is Saturday night.
Okay, so.
Yes, sir, from 5 to 9. 9 to 10. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Item seven, our citizens with input. Is there any member of the community who wishes to address council at this time? Yes, sir. Please step forward and tell us your name and address.
Well, I'm not really a resident in Perry.
That's okay.
Living in Warner's, Robbins. I'm a builder. I'm Barry Hooper, Houston Homes. We've got two communities in Perry that we're building homes right now. I've got about 20 homes going, and the reason I'm here, we're having to use Advanced Disposal to, for our trash containers. We feel that we should have the opportunity to use whoever we want throughout the communities. The problem is with Advance, I have nothing against them other than they will not pick up within a reasonable time. I've had six dumpsters in one community sitting there overflowing for two weeks. They could not get to it, and you know, it's unacceptable. I'm building houses constantly, and we need places to put trash and get rid of it. I don't like leaving my communities nasty, and I'm asking for the opportunity to use whoever we want to use. You know, what I want to do is keep Advance in one community, maybe put somebody else in another, take part of the load off. That's what I'm asking for. Thank you.
I thank you, Mr. Hooper. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I appreciate your interest. I have also received a letter from another builder as well, and this particular issue is not new. Every now and then it comes up, and I have instructed Mr. Gilmore to contact Advanced Disposal to ensure that they are providing the customer service that we require by contract. To answer your question, we are a, we do franchise that particular service. That's why it is a requirement to use that particular vendor. However, we also require that they provide the service, and it appears that that is not happening. So we have already had, addressed that, and if it does not, if that problem does not rectify itself, then we have an alternative that will allow you to get your trash dumped in a reasonable amount of time. So I appreciate you bringing that to us. If you would, contact Mr. Gilmore, the gentleman at the end, and he will get your information and contact information and to make sure that you do not have this problem in the future. It is something that we can address, and I don't ever like to use the word "control", but we do know that it is very important to you as a builder in town, and we want to make certain that we're not doing something or causing you to use a vendor that would cause you some problems, and that is very important to us, and I appreciate you giving that, giving the time tonight to come, make us aware of that. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to address council? Item eight, our consent agenda items. Council, item eight A, for your consideration, you have been provided the minutes of the March 14, 2016 work session, the March 15, 2016 pre-council meeting, the March 15, 2016 council meeting, and the March 17, 2016 joint work session of the council and the Perry Planning Commission. Council, at this time, I will entertain a motion that these minutes be approved as presented.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion, changes, deletions, or additions to the minutes as presented? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item nine is old business. Item nine A, is any other old business from the mayor? I have none. Item nine B, is old business from council members? Ms. Bynum-Brace?
I have none.
Mr. Walker?
No, sir.
Mr. Hunt?
No, sir.
Mr. Jackson?
No, sir.
Mr. King?
No, sir.
Thank you. Item nine C, is any other old business from the city manager? Mr. Gilmore?
No, sir.
Thank you. Item nine D, is any other old business from city attorney? Mr. Holber?
No, sir.
Thank you. Item 10 is new business. Item 10 A, are matters that have been referred from last night, March 28, 2016 work session and today, March 29, 2016 pre-council meeting. We have several items that surfaced from last night's work session that we need to address. 10A1, we are being, we are asking to authorize a partnership with the Houston County Board of Commissioners and the resurfacing of Sandifer Road. Council, you may remember this discussion from last night. Sandifer Road will run from Houston Lake to, is it Lake Joy? Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
This will entail the repairing, which it needs some, the resurfacing and restriping of this particular road. You may remember that Mayor Pro Temporal Walker and I had a meeting with Chairman Stonaker and Commissioner Thompson, and you have seen the summary of those notes. This is part of it. The chairman has suggested that the cost of this will be between $285,315,000 or somewhere in that neighborhood, and that we add this particular project to the current LMIG resurfacing that we do on an annual basis. You may remember that we do consolidate, if you will, our projects along with the other two cities in the county in order to take advantage of economies of scale. The county has offered to pay for half of this particular project, so we had the discussion last night, and council has, if they so desire, vote to pay for our half and take care of a road that is in dire need of repair and striping. Having said all of that, at this time, council, I will entertain a motion that we authorize the partnership with the Houston County Board of Commissioners and the resurfacing of Sandifer Road as described.
So moved.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 10A2, we had a discussion in that same meeting about financial contribution towards airport improvements. There were two parts to this under 2I. We have talked about several, there's essentially three projects that are ongoing at the Perry Airport. You may remember that the city of Perry and the Houston County Board of Commissioners own the airport jointly, 50/50 partnership. We have an authority that is set up to run it. The, there are three projects ongoing. One is the construction of some tea hangers. The second is the purchase of some property that is actually south of the runway. Those two projects together total, Mr. Walker?
About 780,000.
$760,000 or so. We have had numerous conversations concerning this in the past. Council has determined that it would be in our best interest, in the interest of the airport authority and our partner, to pay our half of that. In paying that, in paying for that, it would be right at $338,000 or so, some, three quarters, something like that. The schedule for those payments is what we need to appropriate today or tonight, and what we are proposing to do is appropriate $150,000 to be paid in fiscal year 2016, which would mean it would happen before June 30 of this year, that we would pay another $150,000 in fiscal year 2017, which has been requested to be, what we are proposing to do is pay that in December, latter part of December, first part of January, and the balance of the remaining bill will be less, $40,000 or less, to be paid in fiscal year 2018, which would be in July of 2018. Council, at this time, I will entertain a motion that we appropriate $150,000 payment to the county for fiscal year 16 and fiscal year 17, and the remaining balance due in fiscal year 18 for the tea hanger project and the purchase of property as described.
So moved.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Mr. Gilmore, what's the source of funding for this?
This will come from general funding.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. The second part of that has to do with the GBI is constructing, the county's constructing a hangar for the Georgia Bureau of Investigation. They currently have a hangar at the Perry Airport, but this hangar is going to be significantly larger. It will enable them to greatly expand their operations and have a full-time staff there 24/7 with mechanics and pilots. This is what my understanding is.
The correction, Georgia Highway Patrol.
What does that say?
It's GBI.
I'm sorry.
It's Georgia.
You're right. But thank you.
Just correct.
We can, the ease of using the computers, Ms. Warren can strike a key and it will be corrected almost immediately. It is the Georgia Highway Patrol.
Georgia State Patrol. State Patrol. Georgia State Patrol.
It's the guys with the little blue cars that ride around and give you tickets and have jurisdiction everywhere, at least in the state of Georgia. Thank you. Georgia State Patrol is building a hangar. Thank you. At any rate, that particular project has a total cost of $1.4 million. It is being financed through the county. The county's financing it through various sources. We had a long discussion concerning this particular scenario. Council has determined that we do need to finance a portion of this particular project, but, and Chairman Stonaker has acknowledged that he's not expecting us to finance 50% of it. Therefore, what we are doing tonight is authorizing an amount to be allocated, subject to a finance agreement, for the Georgia State Patrol hangar to be paid in fiscal year 2018 or later. Was that not what we had decided, Mr. Stonaker, council?
Right.
Because that is a much larger project. So at this time, council, I will ask for the authorization of approximately $200,000 allocation, subject to a finance agreement and our specific ability to pay in fiscal year 2018 for the Georgia State Patrol hangar project at the Perry Houston County Airport as described.
So moved.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 10A3, we discussed last night the, a contract with Slaven Management Consultants for the recruitment of a Director of Community Development position. Mr. Gilmore?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, you may remember from your work session discussion, we requested proposals following up your direction. There were two that were submitted, and we recommended to you, Slaven Management Consultants, for recruiting the Director of Community Development position, and we recommend that you so authorize the agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Gilmore. Does any member of council have any further questions for Mr. Gilmore concerning this particular agreement? Hearing none. At this time, I will entertain a motion that we approve the contract with Slaven Management Consultants for the recruitment of the Director of Community Development position as described.
So moved.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 10A4, we are being asked to authorize a letter of intent with Raymond James for proceeding with bond financing and refinancing for our water sewer project. Ms. King?
Yes, sir, Mayor. As we discussed last night, this letter of intent is needed in order for Raymond James to provide us any type of advice, recommendations, what have you, concerning refinancing of the 2007 bond or financing any other new issues. And this is an agreement. It can be rescinded or at any point in time.
Thank you, Ms. King. Council, we discussed this at length at last night's work session. There is, has been a change in the law that requires any of these financial consultants to have a signed letter of intent from a prospective customer before they can even give us advice, so as, in order to protect them and their securities and exchange ratings. This is one of the necessary things that we need, and you also may remember that we do have a need that is forthcoming for water and a new well that we've been contemplating for some time now. At this time, I will entertain a motion that we authorize the signing of the letter of intent with Raymond James for proceeding with the bond financing, refinancing for the water sewer project as described.
So moved.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 10A5, we're being asked to authorize the striping of South Perry Parkway in partnership with the Houston County Board of Commissioners. Council, you may remember that we have looked at this for some time. If you look at the South Perry Parkway from Larry Walker Parkway all the way around to Georgia Highway 224, it is in desperate need of striping. It's okay during the day, but when you're as old as I am and your eyes are as weak as they are at night, it's hard to see the lines in the road. We have determined that a portion of this road is in the county. Chairman Stonaker is, has agreed, or has asked us to consider a prorata portion, if we are going to pay, excuse me, if we are going to strike, that it doesn't make sense to stripe only the portion that's in the city. Mr. Gilmore and the city staff have determined that roughly 80% of this portion of the road is in the city and 20% is in the county. Mr. Aaron, I think I should have let you describe all of that, but take it from there, because I don't remember how much the estimate is.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. In fact, I had a call the other day, a fellow gentleman was coming, called about the same thing about striding. But we did get a quote from the estate, "Striping and construction is around $81,000 for the complete project."
You're in agreement to move forward with this, this project as we've described it?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Aaron. What we will do is recommend back to the, the county that we prorate this particular project, and the city will pay 80% of it, and ask the county to pay their prorata share of roughly 20% of the amount that Mr. Aaron has determined. Mr. Gilmore, what is the source of funding for this particular project?
This would be from general funding.
Thank you, sir. Council, at this time, I will entertain a motion that we authorize the striping of South Perry Parkway in partnership with the Houston County Board of Commissioners as described.
So moved.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 10A6 is the order bid. 10A6I is bid number 2016-23 for the Houston County Campus Project. Ms. King?
Thank you, Mayor. Bid 2016-23 is for the Houston County Campus, as the mayor just stated, to install water and sewer lines across Airport Road to that facility. They're asking, the owners of the property are asking that, that we install them so they can be, have it ready for their site visit June 1st, and this would allow the guys opportunity, oh, I'm sorry, the main thing is to award the bid to the low-bid of Lokey Enterprises in the amount of $148,375.
This is the extension of water and sewer lines, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Along the Perry Parkway to the site location?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Does any member of council have a question, or Ms. King, concerning this particular bid? If not, at this time, I'll entertain a motion that we accept the department, staff, and engineers' recommendation to accept the low bid in the amount of $148,375 from Lakay Enterprises as described.
So moved.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Mr. Gilmore, what's the source of funding for this?
A portion of that will be paid for from SPOST, a portion of it will be paid for from the Economic Development Section, Hotel Hotel Tax.
Thank you, sir. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. King. Next is a resolution for consideration and adoption. Under B1, we have, need to select a voting delegate for the Municipal Gas Authority of Georgia Annual Election. I usually attend this particular meeting, and I'm asking the council to select myself as the voting delegate for the Municipal Gas Authority of Georgia Annual Election when they have their annual meeting. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to that effect.
So moved.
Second. Motion and a second. Mr. Gilmore, do we need to have an alternate, or can we reserve that at a later time if it's required?
They would probably want to have an alternate now if you're ready to appoint one.
I should have done that to begin with. Let's do it, Mr. Walker, can I just do it in two motions, or can I amend the first one?
I think you can do it in two motions.
Okay. This motion is, I got a second, did I not?
Yes, you did.
Thank you. For appointing me as the voting delegate, if there's no further discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say aye. Motion carries unanimously. At this time, I'll entertain a motion that we appoint a, an alternate delegate for the Municipal Gas Authority of Georgia Annual Election. At this time, I'm going to ask that the Mayor Pro Temp be appointed, and we can change that if we need to, if he's willing to serve.
More than happy.
Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Under item C, we are being asked to approve the Perry Main Street Advisory Board's contract recommendation. Ms. Edgman?
When Perry Main Street was a separate board independent of the city, it trademarked the Perry Farmer's Market name with the Red Rooster logo. When the Main Street program came under the city as a city board, the ownership of the name and logo followed to become owned by the city. Mrs. Daly has continued to operate the market, but because it's no longer officially a city market, she would like to be able to continue to use the name and logo that she has already put on her advertising. So, Main Street recommends that she be allowed to do so, provided she meets the conditions outlined in the contract.
Thank you, Ms. Edgman. Counsel, you've heard the recommendations, see the recommendation from the Perry Main Street Advisory Board. At this time, I'll entertain a motion that we approve the Perry Main Street Advisory Board's contract recommendation as described.
So moved.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Edgman. Mr. Gilmore, is there anything that we need to address from either last night's work session or tonight's pre-counsel meeting?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Item 11, our department head items, from the Department of Finance and Administration. Ms. King?
Nothing more, sir.
Thank you. From the Police Department, Chief Lynn?
Nothing more, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. From the Department of Leisure Services, Mr. Di.
Just one thing, sir, just want to let the community know about our fishing rodeo coming up on Saturday, April 23rd, and our family movie night at Rosa Park Friday night before on April 22nd.
Very good. Looking forward to it. Pick a good movie.
And popcorn, too.
And popcorn. From the Department of Economic Development, Mr. Smith?
One item, Mr. Mayor. Saturday, April 30th, the Perry Housing Team will be hosting a community cleanup, a spring cleanup of the neighborhood immediately behind the oil land and the Dairy Queen. It'll begin at about 8:30. The more details are followed in regards to where we'll be meeting and having the hot dogs and things afterwards to thank everyone that participated. And we encourage everyone to participate. If you have questions about that, you can see me. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Ms. Edgman, do you have anything to report?
Yes. I wanted to announce that we will be hosting our third annual transhores in downtown Perry on May 5th and May 9th. We do require reservations because we have limited seating on those. Ellie Loudermilk will give a history of downtown Perry's development and talk about some of the interesting architecture we have in our downtown. So, it's a lot of fun and very educational. And I also wanted to make you all aware that on Saturday, April 23rd, the Perry Lions Club, Boy Scout Trip 96, and anyone else who's interested in that hearing, we will be picking up trash as a comedian purification effort during Georgia Cities Week. So, that's Saturday, April 23rd, from 8:30 to around 11:30. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, ma'am. From the Department of Public Works, Mr. Aaron?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to give you, but the actual cost estimate for the striping was $80,165. And the Department of Public Works will be having this spring cleanup for the week, so April 25th to 29th, and will work with Ms. Edgman and Robert to provide any support they might need for us.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
Bye.
I appreciate it. From Fire and Emergency Services, Chief Gray?
Nothing, sir.
Thank you. Item 12 are council member items. Ms. Bynum-Brace?
Have none.
Mr. Walker?
No, sir.
Mr. Hunt?
No, sir.
Mr. Jackson?
No, sir.
Mr. King?
No, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Gilmore?
No, sir.
And Mr. Holber?
No, sir.
Thank you. Item 13 are general public items. Is there anyone present who wishes to address counsel on any item at this time? Thank you. Item 14 are mayor items. Just a few things that I've been reminding you for. Tomorrow, there will be a golf tournament from, for, to benefit CASA at the Southern Landings Golf Club as a fundraiser. It is the Putts and Pucks Tournament, and I believe Ms. Adams has been instrumental in putting this together, and you have the hockey team that's going to...
Make and Mayhem.
Make and Mayhem will have members there participating in the tournament. It should be a lot of fun. April the 1st is Child Abuse Awareness Month proclamation signing. Mayor Pro Temporal Walker will be representing the city of Perry at Senateable City Hall at 9:30 AM for that proclamation signing. And of course, the April 9th and 10th is the Dogwood Festival. We're looking forward to that. April the 25th, the Rainbow House is having their annual Power of Prevention Night at the Swanson House Restaurant as a fundraiser for their organization. And we will have a second meeting in April, as, that one will be at the regular time on that. We will not have to move it. That is all I have. If there's nothing else to come before us, thank you for your interest and participation. We stand adjourned.